A dot projects SR thirty, Loop three oh three to Loop two oh two, and Loop three oh three to SR thirty to I ten. Rebecca Zirk, Director of Engineering, and Luke Albert, City Traffic Engineer, will be presenting. Hello.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm very pleased to be here this evening with A dot to present on both Loop three oh three and also provide us an update on SR thirty. With us tonight, we have Gabby Kemp, the A dot Community Relations Project Manager.
Good afternoon. Thanks for having us, me, the hearing council.
And also-
Welcome ladies.
Thank you.
And also Tricia Brown, who is the Project Manager for the Loop three oh three project. And of course, we have Luke Albert here, who is our representative with A dot. And with that, I'd love to turn it over to Gabby.
Sure. May I have the clicker, please? Good afternoon, everyone. I didn't do a practice run here. There we are. Well, again, thank you so much for the great introduction. My name is Gabby Kemp, and I'm the A dot Community Relations Project Manager for the project. And I'm here with Tricia Brown, and she's the-
Excuse me, could you put the mic in front of you, please? We can hardly hear you, and it echoes back.
Sorry about that. Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks for having us again. I'm Gabby Kemp, and I'm the A dot Community Relations Project Manager. That is a lot better. Yes. I've been with A dot for about seven years. This is my second tour of duty. No stranger to community relations. I took a break, came back, did some consulting, but here we are and happy to be on the project. And I brought Tricia Brown with us, and she's the engineer on the project, or fearless leader, as I call her. And we're going to give you a quick update on the Loop three oh three and the SR thirty project that we're working on. So we have some latest developments to share with you guys. We do have a public meeting, a public hearing scheduled for June twenty seventh at Goodyear Ballpark. And all efforts are underway to promote that and invite residents of your lovely community to come out and learn more information about the Loop three oh three from Van Buren Street down to the Preferred Alternative, which is what we are going to be presenting to the public. That alternative is Alternative Two C South. And if you can take a look at the map right there, that kind of gives you a better idea of what we are working with. Again, we do anticipate construction from Van Buren Street to MC eighty five in 2020, and that is pending our Fonzie approval. And Tricia Brown here with Project Management will go ahead and kind of explain a little bit more about the corridors that we've evaluated to get to this point. It's been a long road coming, and then the selected alternative as well. Tricia?
Good evening. Thank you. The map that's shown on the left here shows the different corridors that were evaluated. And this study began in two thousand and five. So there's been a lot of different evaluations and analysis that have gone on with the project to narrow it down from the blue corridor shown on the left map to what's shown on the right. So Alternative Two C South on the right side of the map there is showing the Preferred Alternative that we are planning to move forward with. And you can see within the blue dash lines, State Route thirty on the southern part of that. We have moved the piece of State Route thirty that goes between Perryville and Saraville into the Loop three oh three study. So by the time our study on Loop three oh three is completed, it will identify that segment of SR thirty. The south designation, we have looked at two different alignments for State Route thirty. It does parallel a few miles south of I ten, near the river. And the south and north designations that we included in this study are just basically identifying north and south of the power lines that run through that area. So in addition to the alternatives that we've looked at, there's also a no-build alternative. So we always go through and compare any of the build alternatives to what the condition would be in the area if the freeway was never there. But this does assume that any city, county, local projects are built as part of this analysis. So stepping back a little bit as far as what the NEPA requirements are, the National Environmental Policy Act of nineteen sixty nine is the NEPA process that we follow for the environmental analysis on the project. So it looks at many things. It looks at cultural resources, hazardous materials, flood plains, utilities, costs. There's a number of different things right-of-way that we look at as part of the NEPA process.
And one of those items with NEPA that we are sure to follow, NEPA ensures that we include the public throughout the entire public process. Because after all, this would be a facility located in your community. So we want to make sure that we are actively engaging with the public at any opportunity possible. And we have done many, many meetings and lots of outreach and continued dialogue with local stakeholders and interested parties and members of the community to just reach out to them and really ensure that they know what's happening with the incredible growth out here in the West Valley. We need to make sure that we take steps to ensure that everyone's informed and that they are active participants in the process. So this kind of just gives you a download of all of the public meetings that we've had for residents dating back, again, to two thousand and six. As Tricia mentioned, the study did start in two thousand and five. Kind of took a rest during the economic downturn, the recession. So we came out initially in two thousand and six, did a big public meeting. We came out again in two thousand and seven, and then it kind of shut the lights off for a little while, ten-year period there. We came back out again just to re-inform the public and keep everything fresh in everyone's minds. And then we came out in December of last year, and we had a great turnout at our public meeting as well. In early January, on the thirtieth and the thirty-first, we went to Rainbow Valley and Estrella Mountain Ranch, and we held additional public forums just to get more of a better idea, better understanding of how the residents are feeling. We have received hundreds of comments from the public, about four hundred, actually. And we just continue to receive those, and we openly receive them. Because as part of NEPA, we do want to ensure that the public is informed and receiving accurate and timely information as part of the process. So again, we do have this public hearing planned this month, June twenty seventh, three to seven P M. at Goodyear Ballpark. The purpose is to inform the public of the Preferred Alternative and to receive their input. This will be a one-of-a-kind public hearing. It'll be very interactive. We're turning the team shop into a theater room where, in lieu of a presentation, we will be looping a video presentation that gives everyone a good insight, a good background. Yeah, it teaches everybody, this is where we've been, this is where we are now, this is where we're going. And it'll be looping in English and Spanish, so participants can come in, sit down. If they didn't quite grasp the information, it'll be playing again in like three minutes. So it's a really fun, interactive way, and that we can catch everybody coming in and out. Because we anticipate having a good turnout, and we're excited about that. After the theater room, we're going to- If you've ever wondered what the suites look like, if you haven't had a chance to head out to the ballpark, we're also going to utilize the suites up there as commenting suites. And we'll have an interactive visual animation where residents can actually pinpoint themselves onto the three oh three and visualize what it'll look like and actually see what the three oh three could look like. It's really exciting. It's something new. It's something different. It's not your average public meeting, and we're very excited to present that for the community. And we are utilizing several methods to publicize the meeting, including ads, postcards. We're partnering with the City of Goodyear to reach out via Nextdoor and email blasts. And we're sending out letters to our partnering agencies and partnering towns and communities. And we're really excited, again, and we invite you all to be there for this one-of-a-kind, interactive public hearing. Next steps.
So the next steps, as Luke is well aware, we've last few months really made a big push to get this public hearing scheduled and on track with all the requirements of the NEPA process. So we are on track for a barely spring twenty eighteen public hearing. And following the comment period, I think that ends middle of July, we'll take those comments, incorporate them into the documents, and finalize the environmental assessment and the design concept report sometime this summer. And the MAG program currently has funded right-of-way acquisition and final design in fiscal year twenty nineteen. So we plan to start that this fall as soon as we get the documents finalized. And construction is currently funded in fiscal year twenty twenty.
That kind of sums up where we are with the Loop three oh three. Again, exciting, exciting activities. We're finally seeing some action moving, so we're excited about that. And then just kind of switching gears a little bit, we are, we do want to update you on State Route thirty. Again, this is the reliever route to I ten. The need is there. We see it every morning during rush hours, morning and evening times. So Tricia can go ahead and explain a little bit more, if you would, on the SR thirty study from the Loop three oh three to two oh two.
Thank you. So this study on State Route thirty started just about the same year, two thousand and five, that the Loop three oh three study started in this same area. And similar to the three oh three, this was impacted by the economic downturn. So this project was also put on hold and was resurrected in twenty eleven. So the four alternatives that you can see on the screen there identify what- Well, there's a north, center, hybrid, and a south, build alternatives. And then the one in the center is identifying the no-build. So these were looked at from the time period from twenty eleven to twenty fifteen. And in January twenty fifteen, these were taken out to the public and asked for comments and input on those alternatives. So you can see from the thumbs up on the upper right corner of each alternative. North alternative was, got five thumbs up. And the no-build actually had two thumbs up. So that was a very good indicator that the public did think that there is a need for a roadway somewhere out in this area. So the north build, or the north alternative, was moved forward from that twenty fifteen meeting. And then the next couple of years, between twenty fifteen and twenty eighteen, more analysis was done, more evaluation, more coordination with agencies, the public, different groups. And the hybrid alternative that's shown there was developed. So this became the recommended build alternative that was taken out to the public, again, in fall of twenty eighteen to collect comments and opinions and ideas on this alternative. And one thing I didn't mention, can you go back? Sorry, I didn't mention that this is identified very clearly as a recommended build alternative. There is still a no-build with this option. So this study is running just about six months behind the Loop three oh three study. So this one has not reached that point where they're ready to make that determination. So there's still one build alternative and the no-build at this point. Thank you. So next steps on this project, the public hearing is scheduled for sometime in fall of twenty eighteen. And that would put this to finalize the environmental assessment and design concept report sometime in summer of twenty nineteen. And right-of-way acquisition following in twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one with construction of Phase One or the interim roadway in twenty twenty-two.
So we have gone over lots of dates, lots of information. Yeah, so we appreciate you guys sticking with us. Just to kind of summarize a little bit more of this SR thirty public involvement, you see here, we have taken, you know, no breaks between the three oh three and this one. We started out real strong when we initiated the study in two thousand and six. We had our agency and scoping and public meetings in two thousand and seven. Again, the lights went dark a little bit during the recession. Everything got put on hold, but when we came back out again in twenty fifteen, we had another public meeting. And it's pretty typical for us to keep coming out to the public every couple of years to make sure that we are informing them of the progress that we've made and how they can make a difference and participate in the process. So again, we do have the public hearing coming this fall, sometime twenty eighteen. We haven't decided which date that will take place yet, but it's coming. And again, we will take all of the typical avenues that we do, ads, postcards, email blasts, all of the nine yards to make sure that residents are informed and so they can participate in the process. We like to be transparent. So with that, we want to open it up. What questions do you have for us?
All right, Council? Councilor Lortano?
First of all, thank you for a really good presentation. It was very interesting. You gave a lot of information, because like you said, sometimes there's several years between these. I have one question about the three oh three and one about the thirty. For the three oh three, a lot of our residents in Estrella, I know this is not south of the river, what we're talking about now. But this may be a Rebecca question. Does that, where it's going to connect, that's more in line with our alternative that we've been asking to go around Estrella, correct?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Lortano. So if we go back, thank you. So if we go back to the western bend of the alignment there, that is in line with the proposed alignment we have that is located south of there. So it is heading in a southwesterly direction at this point. Again, we're not identifying that corridor at this time. However, it is currently aligned in the right-of-way that the city had purchased and is heading in a southwesterly direction.
Thank you. Since it's not there, I just wanted to make sure. And then my other question was the State Route thirty. Is that so far set to end at the two oh two, or are there any plans to move it past where the new two oh two is going in?
MAG, MAG is going to be leading that study from the two oh two over to the I seventeen, the Drango curve. And I don't think that they've put out the RFP for that yet, but probably summer, fall of this year, is what I understand.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other question? Yes, Councilwoman Stiff?
Yes, thanks for the presentation, being here tonight. Sherry asked one of my questions about the southern route through EMR. That was a big public effort that we did a number of years ago that I think everybody remembers.
Bill, would you pull that up closer? Thank you.
I think that's the one that everybody remembers, is the meeting, the public meetings that we had down in Estrella, talking about that southern branch and not this loop connection to the thirty. But in relation to SR thirty, I'm obviously not a transportation engineer, so I'm trying to figure out how the concept of paralleling an already jammed traffic, you know, highway system, paralleling it with another one is going to relieve anything. So can you talk a little bit about how this parallel road concept, as opposed to just building an upper deck or something else, might be a better alternative? Can anybody address that?
Well, would you like me to, or do you want? Well, I can't address the engineering portion of it. That we will leave to-
Just philosophically, how does this work?
Right, well philosophically, I mean, they vetted all these different options. And the public is really showing that they use I ten a lot, and we see it very congested in the mornings and the evening times. So we have been tasked with trying to find out, okay, how can we address this issue? How can we alleviate the traffic on I ten? There is exponential growth in the West Valley cities that we've seen. And so this plan put forward, you know, well, this study brought out several options, again. And with public input, they developed that hybrid alternative, which is a good, happy medium of the northern route and the southern route. And so the public themselves kind of came out and said, this is the route that we would like because there is a lot of traffic, you know, coming back and forth, and there's a lot of semi-trucks. And I don't have to tell you guys, you know, the traffic need is there. If you wanted to speak about the engineering portion of it, that might be-
No, not specifically the engineering part, but just, you know, the common sense thinker says if there's four lanes eastbound and four lanes westbound, and they're jam-packed. And the, there was a morning traffic report about a month or so ago. And the way that the radio personality described it is the roadway capacity has been exceeded, is how the person mentioned it, basically saying, it's just jammed because we've got more people using it than we've got the capacity to, you know, to fill it. And I thought it was a very interesting choice of words. So we've been talking a lot about SR thirty. And so are we talking about three, four, five lanes in SR thirty as, you know, in each direction? I mean, how many lanes are we talking about? And are we really just going to move the problem from north to south? So I think from that's that engineering piece that I'm talking about. So how many lanes are we looking at, and what are we talking about?
Rebecca, I think you wanted to answer that.
I would, I would love to jump in, but thank you, Councilmember Stiff. That's a great question. But again, I think what I would like to maybe give a little bit of details on is when we look at corridors such as this, and again, I'm not involved in this study, but I'll just give you from experience and other examples, is that we're focused on where are the people going to and where are they coming from? Are they passing through? Are they heading south? Not everybody's going to downtown Phoenix, so we're looking, are they going to the southeast valley? Are they just going bypassing through the city? Are they heading down ten and then jumping on Fifty-Ninth Avenue and heading south for three miles? So there's a lot of information that goes into trying to determine an alignment like this. And I'm sure that A dot has done all of those studies, as well as MAG, to determine that this is the best alignment, that we're not just simply moving a problem, but we're actually spreading so that we have capacity available on both the I ten and the SR thirty for the traveling public.
Okay. So the last question about that, then, is lanes. How many lanes are we talking about for thirty?
The interim that's planned, that what's termed Phase One, is going to be a two-lane at-grade roadway. And it's ultimately a four plus one.
Yeah, it's all, it's down to cost.
Two lanes at grade means traffic lights, et cetera?
That's correct. So you wouldn't have interchanges?
And I'm going to interject into this because we've been discussing this in MAG a long, long time. And so it's nice that that newscaster was so brilliant to put that forth. But I will tell you, their study's been shown, it's not once. They've been up several times and having different components and come and talk to us. And I will tell you that every mayor in the West Valley pushed to get this through, and all the cities, and they want this, and their citizens want it. So I'm going to give a message to the newscaster. It's fine for making those, but please check with the cities in MAG before they make those statements. So just let you know that there's a lot of support for this. And I understand with Estrella that they had a misunderstanding or the fear of that it would run right through their neighborhood. And I've been with you at meetings, both, and you handle it beautifully. I mean, you get the information out to the people and let them know, so.
Thank you.
My final question is about funding. Is this tied to Prop five hundred?
Four.
Or is this a four hundred?
It's what we've presented right here is all in within the program. Yeah.
Yes.
Up through Phase One.
Okay.
The full freeway is not funded for State Route thirty.
The entire valley that belonged to MAG voted on this. And it was really a special time that the West Valley mayors became very, very strong. And we, we got this through when the other parts of the valley wanted to spend it on other things. And so I can tell you, we're very, very proud of that movement we made, and we'll keep bragging about that. Somebody up here, Wally?
I just had, thank you very much for the presentation. We're very much interested in this because of our traffic pattern. So many of our residents do work in other cities, and I ten is the only way you can go. The surface streets are already at capacity. And we appreciate that. You mentioned that only this phase was funded. So do you have an idea of what year the three oh three might be finished completely? Are we looking at twenty thirty or twenty fifty?
At this point, the three oh three is funded down to Lower Buckeye. So that's the piece that will be constructed in the next couple of years.
I understand that, and then it stops forever?
It'll, it'll come back into Cotton Lane, just like it does at Van Buren right now.
And that's it? That's as far as it'll go?
And then at some point in the future, that's unknown, that system interchange will need to be funded. But it really, it really doesn't function the way it needs to until thirty gets out to that point. So really, the funding for thirty needs to be in place to make that system interchange.
Thirty needs to be built.
Correct, to get the traffic to need the system interchange at that point.
Someone asked me when we were ever going to finish it, and I just didn't have an answer for them. I just had no idea.
Yeah, it's, I don't think it's known.
Twenty thirty, twenty fifty, but I don't even know if that's a good year to say.
It's unknown at this time.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. Yes, Joe?
Listen, I appreciate the presentation. I drive in the morning to GCU. I don't even get on ten. So anything you can do to alleviate ten, I use Camelback all the way to it. Because if I use ten, it's another twenty minutes, maybe thirty minutes to get there. So I appreciate the efforts. Anything you can do to try to alleviate that traffic. But I know ten is not the way to go in the morning, if you can try to avoid it. So I appreciate your efforts in the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other question? Yes, Brandon?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the presentation, like Erbil said as well. I know a lot of residents, including myself, are very excited about this project. So we get a lot of questions about it. So just looking at the timeline real quick, so twenty twenty, you're going to start construction on the three oh three, proposed tentative right now.
Correct.
And then do you foresee you completing it in those two years to where SR thirty then starts up? Is that the plan there? I'm just curious about the interchange between the connection to three oh three to SR thirty, or if there will be an intermediate-type plan where we connect to the MC eighty-five? People can hop on MC eighty-five there?
The interchange, actually, where the two freeways come together, is not funded right now. So the interim roadway would tie into a local road, yes.
Okay, so it spilled out onto possibly MC eighty-five?
Possibly MC eighty-five. That would be a logical-
Yeah, and then to Bill's point, you said it would be, SR thirty right now is at grade with lights along the way? So it'd be a road, I guess not a, in my mind, not a freeway essentially, yet.
That's correct. The Phase One or the interim, yes.
Okay, and then I got a, just a question I get asked. In the three oh three part that is open now, at what point do we open up the rest of the lanes that are possible on that, on that road? Looks like the interchange, like there's little blockers up for, to head, like two lanes could go east and west, or at least the east or west, and then underneath the three oh three, there's potential for more lanes at a capacity. When you see more traffic, then you potentially open it up, or is it a, I'm just curious.
Are you, just so I'm clear, are you saying on, to go southbound? Is that what you're saying?
Either way, really, when you're heading over to west, yeah, eastbound. You're heading eastbound from the south, and there looks like there's a little block.
They have like four poles kind of sitting in the center.
So, so once the freeway is extended to the south, then those lanes would be needed to merge the traffic? So they're for future use when the freeway is opened?
Potentially. They're built for the future. I just was curious at one point.
Yes. So as, when this piece of three oh three is constructed, so basically, we'll take what's happening at Van Buren and move it down to Lower Buckeye?
Oh, okay.
Pretty much. That's what it'll look like at Lower Buckeye when that's done.
Yeah, yeah, I know. There's a lot of excitement around it, so I live real close there as well.
Good. Glad to hear that.
My kids are looking forward to, when they open it up, to ride their bikes on it before we go to, open it to the public.
That's always the best part.
That's what he was getting.
Like David, the one oh one, when that opened up. We got a day where people got to ride their bikes on the freeway before it opened, so. Be a good celebration.
Memorable, good memory, yeah.
Make notes.
Thank you.
Wally?
I forgot to mention, a couple of folks have said to me, why does A dot build only a one-lane egress from I ten to one oh one, both north and south, when it's so difficult? The traffic does back up a tremendous amount of time. And I know it's more money, but if you go to the East Valley, a lot of those off-ramps are two lanes. But apparently, it appears that ours are all one lane. And it's just so dangerous on that freeway if they're backed up half a mile. And that is really the case, especially in the morning. I know it takes me one hour and twenty-two minutes to drive from Pebble Creek to across the street from the state capitol in rush hour. Because I am not in the carpooling.
You need to get a Prius.
I know. And it just is insane, but it's, you know, the traffic is so backed up with the cars trying to go on one oh one north, but it's only one lane.
Right, and if I'm not mistaken, those were built, the West Valley interchange was built prior to the ones in the East Valley.
When we didn't have the population also, or the number of cars on the road.
We didn't have the one oh one, the two- We didn't have the 101. The 202 was already out there.
Okay. Then I, I could be misspeaking.
The last ones to get it.
ADOT, ADOT has learned, I think they're not building one lane flyover ramps anymore, so.
I, I would hope not.
Right.
Thank you.
This just reminds me, maybe something we need to do better. And I need to do better. Prop, money of these things are from Prop 400, which is going to expire soon. And so all the decisions are made between the cities of how we're spending this leftover money. So that henceforth, we got the R-30 with some of that leftover money to do where we're doing it right now. So all these things you're talking about are gonna be in the Prop 500 money. And so that is the reason that you see that you don't have the information you need. And they are talking about another lane on that 10, I-10 to 101.
Oh, good.
Now, that's, that's some time out. So I think that's gonna be Prop 500 money because it's gonna be really expensive.
Yeah.
But that, they have talked about it in MAG. So maybe what city manager, what we need to do is, because you go to some of the MAG meetings too, and I do, and I can see there's lack of information by some of the questions they've asked. So if there's some way that we can get our assistants to get information to them, if that's possible, I think.
Or if they can just take our concerns to whomever, because y'all are the one making the decisions, not us.
No, no, but, but if you, your questions are, are asked on things that have already been decided to do, or are decided because of the funding. So there's reasons, there are answers to give you right now. You can't, now, we don't know a lot of it until the Prop Fund 500 comes, and we don't know the amount of money that's going to be in gas taxes. Low, there's a lot of things now, and it doesn't work in our favor. So anyway, but thank you for your presentations.
Thank you.
I thought they were very good, and the maps were very good. It's nice to see a map.
Thank you.
It really helps, so.
Helps.
Appreciate it, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for having us out tonight.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next item is 3.2, is a presentation from staff seeking council's directions regarding the review of the compensation to the city council. And I'm going to make the statement, I put this on the agenda. I got some comments from council, some, about how come you did this? We got an election coming up, we got this coming up. Okay, the reason I asked for it is that coming in the next year is we have people that are gonna be termed out. And we need other people replacing them. And it's great to see younger people like you, Councilman Hampton. I can't put these two quite in your age room. Sorry about that, guys. But, but it's, it's costly to be on a council, in a sense, because it's your time away from your job and away from your family. So it's very meaningful. And so I was looking for the, to the future of wanting, of people wanting to run, not just because they feel like they could do a good job, because you saw by some of the resumes you read, people really want, really interested in. But once you get into it and you realize the inconvenience of a lot of it, the suits the men need to wear to these different events, the, with women have to, so you spent a lot of money out of pocket on this job and, and taking your partner with you on some of the places. So I wanted to bring it forth. If it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen. And what I asked for is what we did before, where we had a committee. And that committee came forth with, I'm hoping he can tell me what percentage of a raise they wanted to give us. And, and the committee gave this forth, and we voted it down. And that committee, some of those people said, we'll never sit on a committee again. We put the facts, we had the exact facts, the exact numbers, and you walked away from it. So, so I just wanted to preface this before you get going, because I don't want to put my council in harm with residents. They're gonna come up and say, hey, wanna get reelected, you just wanted more money. You know, I didn't want that to happen. So that's why I'm just having an honest conversation tonight about this with you. So they're doing something that I asked. And for the public, I can do that as a mayor. Takes three people if a council person wants to put it on. But I, as a mayor, can do that. And so I chose to do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're here to seek direction from council regarding a review of compensation for city council. Darcy and I will walk through it. I'll just give some background history, and Darcy's gonna walk through a recommended Last, the last update of council compensation was in November of 2006, with the changes taking effect in June of 2007. So it's been over 10 years since there was any action. At that time, council formed a citizens' personnel committee to review compensation. Most recently, based on a recent survey of benchmark cities in the valley, the, the survey suggested that a review of compensation is warranted. Many other cities have provisions in their charter that they look at it annually. Again, we haven't looked at it since 2007. With any changes that a committee would recommend and council would adopt, it would only, it would not impact current sitting council. Any adopted changes from this process will impact future elected or reelected council members. So that's, that's a background history. Darcy will walk through a recommended process.
So if council should choose to move forward with the citizens' committee to review the compensation information, we currently have about 16 applications for people who are interested already in serving on a board or commission. And if you would like, then HR Director Lockett and myself, we could actually go through those applications, select approximately five people, ask them and invite them to actually serve on this very short-term ad hoc committee. And we would then present them all the information. It would not be a, a staff decision. It would be the committee that would actually make the decision on whether they thought that there was some big discrepancy enough that it would deserve some kind of increase. With that direction, if we did have the ad hoc committee look at it, then we could actually bring this back to the council to actually vote on in the fall. And we could do that either at a work session, if the council should choose, or we could actually just come back with the actual change at an evening meeting to have the vote. Now, there is something of a time constraint on this, because the charter does require that any change take place 120 days before the next general election. Right now, the next city of Goodyear general election is slated for May 21, 2019, and 120 days prior to that is January 21, 2019. So with that, we're here to answer any questions you may have.
I'm going to ask for discussion because we can't vote on it, but I do need to be able to look in your eye or see your ear twitch, your nose twitch, or something that kind of gives me idea if we're going to be doing this. So, Joe?
Charter says it has to be in by 120 days?
It has to be completed 120 days prior to the general election.
Is there anything that would prevent us from making it effective for the 2021 election? That in essence means nobody currently sitting would be subject to it until after the following election. That's why I'm asking the question, can it be effective in the 2021 election?
Typically, an ordinance is effective 30 days after the adoption. And I think you could probably specify it to go out.
But could it be?
I think you could, with a reservation. Let me look into that a little bit closer.
Okay. Because you kind of see my point on there. If somebody is concerned about that, that's coming up in the next election, alls you do is you push it back to the following one, because one's termed, yours termed, you know, they're gonna be termed. So there will be nobody, at least the majority of them will have, the majority sitting on council will have no skin into that council race. So it's just a thought that may, I throw out to my fellow council members, there are any of them that may be concerned about that. If we can not make it effective the 19th, make it effective the 21st. Just, just a question.
I'll take a look at that and get back to you.
Vice Mayor?
Okay, I have two questions. Buckeye isn't on here, do they not get money? Or did you forget money?
And, uh, no, we, we went back and we looked at all the cities that we had used in the prior evaluation. So what we would do, what we would do to provide information to a new committee that might be assembled is to provide updated information. This is the last information that we gathered back in 2017, end of 2017. We would refresh this, we would include Buckeye and any others. I think one of the things that we would also seek direction on is looking at these benchmark cities. Are you comfortable with what we have? Do you want any adjustments? And certainly take the advice of the committee as well, from, from a benchmarking perspective.
Okay. I just wondered, because they weren't there. I like the idea of having a citizens' committee look into it. I'm sorry, Mayor, and if we say no, they'll never, they'll never come, they'll never want to be on a committee again.
No, you're misunderstanding.
No, I'm just saying.
So the whole purpose of this is to look into this and find out.
I think the citizens should say it. If, if, I mean, it's not that I want to make a lot more money, that's, that's not there. But so many of the cities have different allowances for their council members, which allows our council members to do so much more for their communities, that I think we're missing the boat in some of the things that we're doing. But then I don't, I didn't know any better until I was out and about with all the other council members. And when they tell me what their allowance is, or what they do, or how they do certain things, I'm saying, wow, my city's bigger than your city. Whoa, you know, we don't do that. So I'm in favor of having a, a citizens' committee take a look at it and then tell us what they think.
Okay.
And then we could decide what year, Joe. I mean, you know.
Sherry?
Yeah, I think the mayor hit it on the head. This is something really, it's just very uncomfortable, because you know, if you do decide to run again, it, it just puts you in a really bad spot. I work, in fact, I have three jobs. I teach at night, I do this job, and I do my law job. And for, until last year, we had a contract for the city of Phoenix on Monday night. I had to hire every Monday that we had a meeting. So it cost me, so people, people don't realize it's about $600 to $700 on some months to get court coverage, because my law partner had a Monday contract as well, so she couldn't cover for me. So we actually had to pay out of pocket. And I was very blessed that my law partner's like, yeah, that's fine, we'll pay for the coverage. But then I'm also like, kind of understand, there, there's a couple of things. I, I don't have a problem with going to a committee. I, I don't know if I would support a recommendation or what the recommendation be, but I'm always open to having the discussion. I, I am a little concerned about some of the benchmark cities are, are much higher in population than us. So that is a concern, but I think that's something the committee would look at and take at. I also really do hear the vice mayor's point. One of the things that, that I do see is like, and I don't know if this is something that the committee would come up with, is maybe some of that funding, rather than going to salary, should go to us to be able to have more programming. And I think with a, with our new city manager, who's very open to ideas and everything, that might actually be a, a great way to, to get the word out. So I'm open, and I really do like Councilman Pizzillo's idea of making it looking forward.
Yes.
You know, I think that's a really good idea. And like, I didn't do this for the money. That's not why I signed up for it.
No.
But I do understand we want to attract people and some young people that may not be able to be self-employed. I'm fortunate, I have that opportunity. But there are some people who work that may not be able to take the time off. And, and so we do want to get that variety. So I don't know if I would support it. I, I do have some issues with it when we have all the needs in the city right now. But I don't have a problem sending it to a committee and letting the committee have a say, say, and give their ideas, because they may have ideas we haven't thought about.
And to be clear, this was just for a study?
I, I know, and that's what I'm saying. I, I don't know how I feel about it, but.
Right. And I know that, that nobody knew that. And also, some of them have the, what do you call it? Because I don't have that, retirement.
Uh, yeah, the EROP. So some of them do have, they're, they're part of the elected officials' retirement.
And that makes a big difference.
Yeah.
Oh, wow. Okay, yes.
I didn't know that.
So that's another thing to consider. Brandon?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna bring up as well. I, I'm okay with having the citizens look at it and deciding, I think that's the way we should do it. And, but yeah, I think the benchmark cities and how, I understand like Avondale, they get like a pension. I don't, I don't want a pension. I'm just, I know there's, I don't have all the things that other cities give their council people is putting here. I know, I think El Mirage, their mayor makes more than our mayor and like half the people we have. But I don't, I mean, I don't necessarily want to, let some of the citizens decide. I don't want, I don't, we don't even need, need money just to get, get, have money. I would, I definitely didn't do this for the money either, so. But I just wanted to, yeah, look at the, at the comps or look at the actual comparisons as well, and just make sure you look at the whole, the citizens and committee looks at the whole thing. So.
Bill?
You know, I think when we talk about being able to do things, you know, quote-unquote "for the residents," I think we have to know whether the communities that we're talking about are districted or not. We are one of the largest non-districted communities. And when you're elected to represent a specific neighborhood, then there makes a little bit of sense to try to get the most you can for your neighborhood. But all of us sitting here are elected at large to represent the entire community. So if we start getting a, for the lack of a better phrase, a bucket of money to do things for a community, then we can start to adversely impact the entire community because we're starting to focus in a favorite spot or, and some of that is very unconscious. So I'm very concerned about that and making sure that we, we look at that. Having said that, I know I'm gonna be in the minority, but I have absolutely zero desire for us to even look at raising our, our salaries.
That's fine.
I, I think there's a tremendous amount of, of work that needs to be done on the city budget. I was opposed to the tentative budget that was, that was adopted, particularly the council discretionary increase, and now we're talking about increasing salaries. And I just read today that 50% of the economists are calling for a recession in 19, and the other 50% are calling for it in 20. This is not the time for us to be raising council salaries. So no matter how we go, that is gonna be my, whether we, it's just a study or not, I don't want to bring people in to study something that I absolutely know I'm not gonna support at the end. I don't want to waste anyone's time.
Mayor? Yes. Sherry?
Does this have to be, and, and, don't kill the messenger over here. I was just wondering, does this have to be a study just for, since this is a charter issue? Are there any other charter issues we would want studied?
I don't know that.
I mean, because with the election changes, is there anything else that we would need studied, or would this just have to be for that?
No.
So this wouldn't be the whole charter?
This is not a charter change.